All right, so, sorry. Hold on. Ms. Hutchinson, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Farmer?
Here.
Mr. Wassenberg? Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Ms. Crager?
I certify. We certify, not yet. Here.
Ms. Catlin?
Here. All right. Okay.
To read the certification.
You want me to I read it?
No, you have the clerk read it, please.
Okay. So do I say I need a motion? Sorry.
Whereas the King William County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.2 Jack 3712D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this school board that such executive meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the King William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully accepted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which the certification applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion for meeting the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered. Mr. Farmer?
I certify.
Mr. Wassenberg? Ms. Atkins?
I certify.
Ms. Crager?
I certify.
Ms. Catlin?
I certify. All right, and I need a motion to certify closed session?
We just didn't.
Why don't you want to do it again? No?
We're good.
Okay. All right, so the next item on our agenda is additions, changes, approval of agenda. And are there any changes to the agenda that are needed?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. Is this working?
It is.
Okay, great. Hi, and Madam Vice Chair, it's nice to see both of you. Congratulations on making it to the second meeting. And for our other board members that are here, it's nice to see you too, folks that are in the audience and those that may be listening from home. I do have one brief change to the agenda, Madam Chair, and that is item number eight. I believe we can remove item number eight from the agenda. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the final agenda?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right. Onto the next item, we have FY25 budget considerations with Dr. Wagner and Mrs. Longest.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And good evening again, and welcome to folks that are here. I thought I might offer a clarification on the last item for the folks that are listening from home. Or if you can't see the agenda, item number eight was the personnel report, and we don't have a personnel report this evening, so that's why we struck that item from the agenda. So those that are trying to play along just by listening, we thought that clarification might be helpful. So thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board and members of the community that may be listening. We're pleased to be with you tonight to share some initial considerations for the FY25 budget. Mrs. Longest and her team and Mrs. Rudd and the whole leadership team, quite frankly, have been busy trying to assemble some things for the board and the community to consider. Just to remind our community where we were, we had a public hearing last week and heard just a very few comments on the agenda, or I'm sorry, on the budget. Mrs. Longest last week also had shared some feedback that we had received from a public survey, and just want to make the assurance that all of that information has been considered when we've assembled some of these considerations that we're going to share this evening. I think it's also helpful for the community to know that the school board is, we're not asking the school board to make, meant to vote on any budget items tonight, but just to receive some of these considerations, give us a chance to go through a preliminary proposal for items that the school board can consider, and then to feel free to have dialogue with one another, with Mrs. Longest and myself, and with members of the leadership team who are here and available to answer questions about items if you had them. Mrs. Longest and I will do the majority of the presentation, but some of the specific questions that you might have, we're going to lean on somebody else's expertise maybe to answer those questions. So I really appreciate the members of the division leadership team that are here tonight. So that's where we are. Before we start, I'll invite any questions, and then we'll spend a little bit of time and share with you some information.
I do not. No?
Okay, before I start, I thought it might be helpful for Mrs. Longest to orient you to the notebook. This is the school board packet that you have with these materials, and want to assure the public that the information that the school board has is going to be visible here on the screen here in just a moment. But Mrs. Longest can orient you to some of the materials that are in there, and then we can get started.
So the first item in your core packet is how we get our numbers from Department of Education that are going to come to the revenue. So that's going to be a front and back sheet, and sort of take those line items based on our ABM, which I will talk about in a few minutes, calculate that. And then those are the revenue lines that I then pulled into our budget. So you'll see more detail of that later, but if you ever want to see where the numbers come from. So last year, we had multiple variations of this, but this is the January 16th updated version. So if you, if, you know, so today's the 23rd, so as of the 16th, they were still making changes. So this is the most up-to-date one, and as we get different drafts of that, I will provide this. The next two pages are what we consider our debt. And the board supervisor meeting last night, Adam Ford, presented a public document that showed all of the financial overview of the county, and there were also some slides from the schools. But this is just the detail of where our, what debt we have and what debt we're paying down. So the longer sheet is the debt that we pay through the county. So the county makes those payments, and they hold that appropriation value from us when they appropriate the money over to make those payments in one year. The next is our payment schedule on an ABM energy efficiency project that we did prior to me getting here back in 2018. And this is our payment schedule for that. And you would just have those information, and you'll see those numbers as we get into the leads over the next few weeks into the budget. I don't want you to have those in front of you. The next piece is a piece of legislation, October 10th, about the minimum wage requirement. So we were up against the minimum wage requirements for multiple years, and this currently sits at a $12 per hour. You're being told on the back end that there is some consideration coming out of the House and Senate that this will be brought back up and could be a item that we will need to consider. So we have considered that in our budget as we go forward, as we move forward, because I do think it's something that's going to come to fruition. So this is just that code section for you. The next slide is the teacher scenario, and that's actually on a slide, so I'll talk about it when we get to that slide, so everyone can see that together. And then under each tab, so I did not label the tabs for all of the, and then all the notes. I figured I can assist with that each time we have a meeting and give a PowerPoint. But you were just, each time I will bring you your PowerPoint presentation, whole punch, and we'll put it in this table, so you have like a running list of all the stuff from preliminary all the way through to final budget. Any questions to read?
No, thank you for doing this.
No, thank you.
Okay, well, we'll move through some of our slides right now. We have quite a few, and we don't necessarily have to spend an hour on each slide. I don't think, I don't think anybody has the energy for that this evening. But we will try to move through at a reasonable pace, and feel free to interrupt if you have any questions or if you'd like some clarification while we're on a particular slide. But there's going to be plenty of opportunity when we finish the presentation to take questions and have some discussion there as well. The first slide you see is just a little bit about the structure of tonight's presentation, the agenda. We want to go through very briefly the strategic plan, and just to remind our community and the board that there is, the board adopted a new strategic plan back in November of 2023. And so we wanted to touch on a few highlights there. We'll talk a little bit about the budget process review. Mrs. Longest will pick up there and then share some key school budget definitions and some considerations that are helpful for the school board and the public to know. And then we'll move into some of the more substantive budget considerations by school and by department. And I'll do my very best to summarize what some of those needs are. We'll turn it back over to Mrs. Longest, and she'll share some information about some revenue and expenditure categories, and then we'll try to wrap things up and give another opportunity for discussion and questions. So, Mr. Kellison, if you're ready, we can move forward. So as I shared a moment ago, the school board adopted a new strategic plan in November, and it was a process that encompassed just about the entire calendar year of 2023. But there is a new mission for the school division to provide our students with learning experiences that prepare them for future success. And then a vision for the division. We're an inclusive community that inspires and empowers all students to find purpose, develop essential skills, and create a bright future. We nurture a resiliency, a love of learning, and a sense of worth in each individual. And we've shared some of these resources at the town hall, Mrs. Longest and I, in late October, and thought it might be helpful for the community to know the difference between a mission and a vision. And a mission is what we do, and a vision is what we aspire to be. And so a good way to think about a vision is like a lighthouse that you're constantly trying to sail to, but you may never reach. It's ultimately going to be a goal, but it's that sort of beacon in the distance that helps us to keep our focus. And our focus is and should always be on helping kids succeed and achieve. And we want to make sure that we put students at the forefront of all the decisions that we make. We do have some core values, and I won't read each of these to you, but I will identify them. Accountability, citizenship, collaboration, respect. Let me go to the next slide. Compassion, inclusivity, and integrity. And these were core values that were established by a representative committee, again, that met for the good part of 2023 to help the division develop this new plan. Next. And then finally, the new strategic plan has new strategic goals. And our plan is available on the school division's website as well. But just in their short form here, the goals are student learning and growth, high-quality and committed workforce, student and staff well-being, family engagement and community partners, and then strategic goal number five, operational excellence and efficiency. I will say something about excellence and efficiency. And even the word effectiveness is, as an organization and as a leadership team, I want to assure our community, we're going to do our very best to be as efficient as we possibly can. But it's also important to understand that efficiency and effectiveness aren't necessarily the same thing. And so in some cases, they work together, but in other cases, they're mutually exclusive. And, you know, I think we've heard from a number of folks at Public Comment that have talked about the desire to have instructional services and educational services strengthened for their children, and that's an example of, you know, a desire to be as effective as we possibly can. But in some cases, you know, that's not necessarily the most efficient way to do things. And we just have to find that balance, and we do recognize that there is a balance. Okay, so with that, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Longest, and she'll share with you some definitions and some other items for you to consider.
So budgeting is really a process that structures and describes how fiscal and human resources will be allocated, utilized over a stated period of time to support the achievement of the organization's goals and objectives. So our fiscal year obviously is July 1 through June 30. So what we have done is, in a budget process, is fully, under school division's budget, should really translate into our priorities, our values, and our needs within the school community. It's an estimate of revenues and expenditures for a set period of time. So responsible fiscal and financial management is the cornerstone of an effective educational program. Today's economic climate requires accountability for school boards, school administrators, teachers, and the community at large, and a school finance policies and procedures should be developed and implemented to promote transparency and public trust. So the budget process that we go about, and I'm not going to read word for word on this, but we originally started this budget process in August, September. We set first step down and figure out what our budget calendar is going to look like. In the month of October, Dr. Wagner, myself, and Director of HR, Ms. Tina Rudd, sat down weekly and kind of talked through what the goals of the organization were going to be. We then created tools that we sent out to the principals at each school and each director level. So transportation and operation, different areas, IT, special education, and things like that. So all that information must be back the week before Thanksgiving. And I, over the Thanksgiving holiday and the next week, combined all of that information. And then the first week of December, the directors and principals presented their budget to the administrative team and kind of walked through their wishes and wants and their needs. And then from there, we took that information and narrowed it down, and from the narrowed down piece you're going to see today. But with that being said, you know, usually we get this tool around December before we leave for break. This year, we got a first draft on January 12th and a second draft on January 16th. So then we take this, that draft that was on that front page and look at what revenues we have coming in. The funding is determined by our ABM, that's our average daily membership, or state sales tax projections that come from the state, are English language students, and the special education December 1 account. And then the state funding is a formula-based and typically does not account for all of the school division's actual costs for education. An example, a good example of that is like assistant principals. It doesn't fund assistant principals under the SOQ model. But every school, you know, many schools, almost every school in the state has assistant principals because of their much-needed position. Key definitions, this is from the Code of Virginia. A budget is an estimate of money needed for public schools' notice of costs to be distributed. It shall be the duty of each division superintendent to prepare with the approval of the school board and submit to the governing body or bodies appropriate funds for the school division by a specific date. The estimate of the amount deemed to be needed during the next fiscal year for support of the public schools and the school division. The estimate shall set up the amount of money deemed to be needed for each major classification or spot by the Department of, the Board of Education, and such other headings and items as deemed necessary.
Let's pause there for a second.
Sure.
We'll pause there. Maybe, Mr. Kellison, if you could just go back one slide. Thanks. A few things to clarify that might be helpful. Just to, I think to reiterate what I had said earlier is tonight, we're presenting just some considerations, right? And many of the considerations that you'll see, you know, are things that we can discuss, and we can move around, we can add to, we can eliminate. Those decisions can come later, but your goal tonight is to sort of tell us the direction that you want us to take. And we'll be able to explain a little bit more about that as we go along. But one of the key words there that Mrs. Longest mentioned two times is an estimate, and that's true. So for instance, I shared some information with each of the school board members yesterday that we got some information from the state that said to sort of be patient with the Department of Education and the governor's office because some of the funds, some of the tools that are used to calculate what some potential funding might be are still in the process of being adjusted. And so there's an example of what you think you know today might change two weeks from now. And in addition to that, the governor does have a proposed budget out, but both the House and the Senate and the General Assembly have the opportunity to make adjustments to the governor's proposed budget. And so it's very likely that the end product of that, which is going to come, you know, a number of weeks from now, the end product is going to look much different than the initial product that we've taken into consideration here. So much of what we'll talk about tonight is an estimate. And then lastly, the code reference there that talks about a date is the school board is required by code to adopt a preliminary budget by April 1st. And so we will definitely meet that timeline. But it's likely that the school board may not be able to approve a final budget until the General Assembly acts. And if you remember this last calendar year, that happened very late. And we're hopeful that it will happen much sooner this time so that, you know, school divisions and other public entities can make the important decisions that they need to make. So just wanted to share some of that clarification with you that much of the numbers, or much of what you'll see this evening and hear this evening, and some of the numbers that you'll share, that we'll share with you, are really just estimates because you have to have placeholder amounts as a starting point. So I'll stop there, and we'll move ahead and let Mrs. Longest continue.
So average daily membership. That's what we call ABM. That's the K-12 enrollment figures used to distribute state per people funding that includes students with disabilities from age 5 to 21, and students who English is a second language, who enter school for the first time after reaching their 12th birthday, and who have, who have not reached their 22nd birthday. Preschool and postgraduate students are not included in ABM. So when we talk about preschool programs, VPI programs, and things like that, those numbers do not count when we talk about the daily, average daily membership. Average daily membership is determined by dividing the total aggregate daily membership days present plus days absent by the number of days school was in session from the first day of the school term through the last day of March. So they, so the state asked for a preliminary number on September 30, and then they ask, September 30? September 30? September 30. And then they ask for another number on March 31st. And so we watch for those numbers, and we report around those numbers as that determines our funding each year. So this shows right here our ABM. So back in 2013, 2014, our ABM was over 2,200. When I arrived here in 1920, our ABM was sitting at 2,158. Then COVID hit nine months later, six months later, maybe nine months, depending on when it really hit.
Six or nine.
And so you can see that our ABM fell drastically. So we went from 2,158 down to, 2020, 2021, down to like 1980. And then we've slowly but surely come back up, and we're sitting currently at about 2,047, 2,045. And that's the 2023, 2024 number. And then projected students by grade level, we use some different indexes to also help with this. But our current enrollment, you can see by grade here. We have to take out private day students that go outside of the district that we do not pay for. We can only count private days in which we pay for. So our current enrollment as of the date I pulled this data was 2,045. And so what we do is our kindergarten number 162, we project kindergarten to stay about the same. So that moves to first grade in the FY25 column, and then we project the kindergarten class. So we've had anywhere between 147 to 162 over the past few years. So I kind of picked a number in the center of 155. And so this is just an estimate of where we are. When I ran the budget numbers that were provided in your packet, we budgeted on 2020. Last year, we were budgeting on 2,000. But we can see large swings from year to year. We see large swings from beginning of the year to the end of the year just based on different scenarios. But I do know for a fact that we have currently this year 214 students who are being homeschooled, and about 78 children are going to other private school situations. So if we were to have all of them to come back at one time, there would be a influx. Next slide, please. Some key definitions, just.
Can I just, can we go back one slide? Yeah, I just wanted to share a little bit more about this visual. This is an interesting way to look ahead, assuming that all things might stay the same. So let's pretend that we knew over the next few years that enrollment by grade level was going to stay exactly where it is. Well, you can look at next year's senior class, and it's already going to be 15 students greater. And but then over time, you can compare an outgoing class to an incoming class. And so this year, we're in FY24. If we're expecting 154 seniors to graduate, then how many new kindergartners do we have coming in on the other end in FY25? And so we have a placeholder number there of 155. So if you think about the fact that your incoming class of children that you expect to stay with you and grow is about the same as your outgoing class, and then you could look at, you know, across the grade levels, and those numbers are relatively stable, you could potentially make a prediction that our enrollment might be relatively stable over time. The indicator, though, is when your senior class has a higher number and your kindergarten classes are progressively smaller. That's what we saw in a few years, the two years leading up to COVID. A lot of school divisions saw a drop in kindergarten enrollment, but especially the two years after the pandemic, as we saw those numbers decline. And then lots of school divisions are seeing fluctuations in enrollment. We're one of the few around here that's expected to see an increase. A number of school divisions are still expecting decreases. And I know that some of our board members may have heard this at some of the recent trainings this week. I think across the state of Virginia, Virginia overall is expecting an enrollment decline, you know, as a state. But here in King William, we're fortunate to have enrollment continue, which continued to increase or at least stay stable. That's great news for economic development and funding and for families. And, you know, we'd love to be able to see those numbers continue to increase. So thank you.
Enrollment, that's all the students the division is responsible for reporting. And then local composite index. We talked about this at quite a length at the town hall, but it's a formulated formula that's generated by the General Assembly that determines the state and local share of K-12. And it's expressed in a ratio. And so the maximum the LCI value could be is .80. But an example, a locality with an LCI of .30 would be responsible for 30% of the cost of public education. So that's the local portion, while the state would contribute 70% of the cost. The local composite index is kind of determined, and it's determined in three different areas. It's related to the true value of real estate, the adjusted gross income, and then the taxable retail sales. So each locality's LCI is adjusted every two years to maintain an overall statewide local share of 45% and the overall state share of 55%. So at the town hall, I wasn't, I didn't, wasn't fortunate to have the 24, 26 numbers, but you can see here that in 2020, 2022, our local index was .34. And then it dropped a little bit to .30, and now it's back up to .31. So this is saying that the local share, let me make sure I read this right, because I'm confused. So this shows that the local share should be about 31% of the public education in the state should contribute about 70% of the cost. um, of the public education in the state should contribute about 70% of the cost. Now, keep in consideration, there are many other variables that go into ABM and things like this. Um, we were expecting our, um, our composite index to increase drastically. But as a whole with the state, we only saw minimal increase, which I think is good for our, um, budget as a whole.
You want to pause this if there's any questions?
Any questions on that? None, okay. Um, and then this is a teacher pay and benefits scenario. I just want to make sure before we start going through the positions, because you're going to see like large numbers shift in, in different fiscal years. I wanted to kind of explain to you what goes into a teacher's salary. So there's the salary. So this is a level one teacher. So his salary is 51, 617. VRS is a mandatory 16.62%. So that shows the VRS portion. Health insurance cu, um, credit is a mandatory 1.21% of their salary. Group life is a mandatory portion of, um, 1.34%. FICA is a mandatory by the IRS of 7.65%. That's, um, for state security. Um, and then healthcare. So when we budget someone, um, we don't know if the person we're going to hire needs family insurance, needs individual insurance, needs no insurance. But to make sure that we're budgeting appropriately, um, we always put in family insurance. And then so you'll see there the family insurance, the cost to the employer is 19.8, uh, non, $19,800. And these are current numbers. I'm just giving you an example. So the total cost of a brand new teacher to the district is $85,260.68. So you'll see the salary benefits broken out below. So when you see, if you see in this, in the next few slides, a $92,000 position, more than likely that's a teacher with a master's degree or a teacher 10, with 10 years of experience with a master's degree. Those were the kind of scenarios that you'll see throughout. And I didn't put all of that detail in the slides, but I can provide that to you if you have any questions as we move through. It's hard to judge. I mean, Tina does a great job of going out and recruiting, but when I say we only budgeted for a te, teacher with a master's degree and 10 years and she's like, well, I have 20. Do we not want them? I mean, she's not going to ask that. She's going to get them because we need them. So we, there, so we finagle it on the backend and try to figure out how to fund that on the backend. But that's to keep you in loop, like we're not, you know, it's hard to tell what's going to walk through the door that's interested in coming to work at King William. So we kind of budget what, what we're looking for. Uh, and we'll tell you, we've added more, um, teacher, 41% of our teachers are five years and below. So, you know, we have quite a few in that area. So, um, but we do have those that come from other districts with lots of years of experience that we, um, take and they can, are great mentors for the rest of our teachers.
Okay. I think Ms. Longest just gave you a great example of those placeholder estimates that we put in the budget. Because, you know, the folks that Mrs. Rudd might be able to recommend for hire could all be 25-year veterans where the budget placeholder might be, um, a person with five years' experience. And so, uh, the best that a school division can do in some cases is make an estimation. But with that, we'll pause and see if there are any questions before we move into some of the school requests and the departmental requests. Okay. Hearing none. Uh, the first slide that you see, uh, we've titled this classroom instruction. Uh, most of the considerations that you'll see on these next few slides by school and by department, well, certainly by school, um, are related to classroom instruction. We wanted to make sure that whatever we do, we tie it back to the strategic plan. And so the strategic plan, uh, under goal one, the subtext is that we intend to engage all students in relevant, authentic learning experiences that prepare them to graduate career, college, and life-ready. And you can read some of the objectives that we have in our strategic plan. And I think you'll find that any sort of personnel request or program request might align well to, uh, one of those objectives. And then in addition, we've tied that to some of the specific strategies that are there as well. So for instance, um, under objective 1.2, just to, and for the folks that might be listening from home, we know that goal one is student learning and growth. Objective 1.2 is all students will demonstrate continuous measurable growth in literacy and numeracy. And then several of the strategies underneath that objective, I'll just read one to you. And that is to evaluate current and prospective literacy and math intervention programs for effectiveness and fidelity of implementation. And so what that translates into is the need for us to be able to put resources in place to help us deliver the highest quality literacy and math instruction, well, all instruction that we possibly can. And in some cases, that takes additional resources than just a classroom teacher. So I wanted to share how we try to align some of these things. But for classroom instruction, it primarily aligns with goal, with strategic goals one and two. Okay, so here we have some combined requests for Cool Spring and for Aquinton. Might be helpful for folks to understand how we've broken this out. Is we thought it would be worthwhile to not just look ahead at the coming year, but to also be able to look ahead three years. And that there are opportunities if we weren't able to make an investment in the coming year, or rather than just eliminate that, we might move that to a subsequent year. Because it's still a priority, but we just can't. We know, uh, from the efficiency side that we can't expect to fund every single request every single year. It's just not feasible. Um, in, in some cases, it's not reasonable. Um, but nonetheless, we want to make sure our community knows that we're trying to identify needs and we're trying to find a way to fulfill those needs, even if it's not in the one year, it might be part of a three-year program. So for combined, we are requesting a math coach for elementary. And one of the reasons why you see, um, zero in FY25 is, is we are, um, projecting that this, that, that we're going to try to accommodate this need in FY26. Um, we currently have, uh, a math coach that serves all of our grade levels. Uh, that individual, or that position rather, has been funded with some federal funds. And we're going to need to recover that position at some point in the local budget. And so you can see, uh, an example there of how that request fits in. We are currently providing some additional counseling services, uh, on a part-time basis across the two elementary schools. That position is also, um, that, that funding stream is going to expire here. And so that's one of the reasons why you see that in FY25. Uh, we believe that literacy is important. I've got a slide in here that'll, uh, describe that a little more related to the Virginia Literacy Act. Uh, we're required by code to implement the Virginia Literacy Act in grades, uh, primarily in grades K through five, but it's really a K-8 initiative. And, uh, that's going to require someone with some expertise to be able to coordinate, you know, the important literacy work that our teachers will begin to do next year. And that requires a whole new curriculum. And I think, uh, you know, the board knows that Mrs. Davis and the, and Dr. Bassett and the, and the literacy team have been sharing information about that. But that's going to require someone to help coordinate that effort as well. Then you can see the last entry on that page is, um, is really a continuation of the part-time counselor. So we're proposing a part-time person that might work, uh, in that capacity for FY25. And then that person would be full-time in FY26. Let me stop there and see if there are any questions. Counseling services, I, I know for teachers that are listening, this is going to be related to some mental health needs that many children have. And with, uh, with one counselor at Cool Spring and one counselor at Aquinton for upwards of a thousand children, that's a, that's a heavy lift. And so additional counseling services, uh, we believe will be helpful. Okay, let's go to the individual schools. So at Cool Spring, we are recommending, uh, the introduction over time of paraprofessionals in kindergarten classrooms. And I think I may have talked about this before, but, uh, all of our pre-K classrooms have a paraprofessional in it. Uh, when those children move up to kindergarten, 23 or 24 in a classroom, that's a lot to handle for a kindergarten teacher. And so having an extra adult in a kindergarten classroom can be a game changer and a lifesaver. So we're proposing a one per teen in FY25. Um, and if, if that initiative can be funded, we're also going to propose that we add maybe two per year as we move into the subsequent years. And we can make that adjustment pretty easily. I shared with the board back in the fall, uh, some, and, and also at the town hall, some ways to grow programs. Uh, one of the, one of the, the, the initiatives that, um, that I think is important, especially for young children, is introducing them to language other than English. And so being able to offer, uh, children the opportunity to learn. Um, and here we have Spanish is just a placeholder, could be any language we chose. However, the time to begin to teach children language acquisition skills is when they're really young, not necessarily when they start high school. Um, and over time, you could imagine that if we start children, at least on a resource rotation, beginning to learn some fundamental, uh, Spanish, let's say, that by the time they get to fifth grade, you may have children, uh, at least through some exposure to Spanish, um, might be better fit to then begin to take Spanish in middle school and to continue through high school. And we know that we'd like to grow our language program anyway. And, and, and I think the way to do that is to introduce kids to it at an earlier age. Um, the school is also requesting some, uh, just some funding for lunch monitors. And this would help provide teachers with an unencumbered lunch. Uh, there, we, our, our teachers at the elementary schools now, um, they have their lunch in the cafeteria with the students and, and lots of teachers do. But there are some supervisory responsibilities, and especially with the younger kids, you know, they all can't always open up their lunch foods by themselves. And so, you know, teachers, uh, are, are sometimes full and double duty. But, uh, they'd like some additional funding for, um, a lunch monitor. Uh, additional first grade teacher to help keep our class ratio reasonable as we expect that larger kindergarten class to move up. Uh, so you can see that request in FY25. I probably should have clarified the, the Spanish position, like an immersion position. You see that we've got that pushed out to FY26. So just to, to give us some time to plan and some time to recruit. But that's an example of where we've, at least internally, suggested that we might push a request out a little bit. And then a second board substitute, and I know Mrs. Longest will talk a little bit more about, um, paraprofessionals and how, how some of our paras support our full-time positions. But, uh, that school could benefit from a second board substitute as well. Teacher absenteeism still remains a little bit high. And, and often there are open positions that aren't covered by, by some of the external substitutes. And so having an internal substitute might be helpful there. And then on the bottom of that page for Cool Spring, you see some instructional materials requests, pretty modest amounts of money. Um, I, I know that you know that teachers use, uh, lots of their personal money to buy classroom supplies. And we'd like to begin to, you know, address some of those line items that may have been impacted, you know, back in the COVID years. And so that's it for, for Cool Spring at the moment. But I'll pause and see if the board members have any questions. And feel free to ask anything you wish.
And I'll just mention, um, you're going to see on each one of these slides some professional development. Um, professional development is something when COVID hit, um, we didn't, there was no really professional development. So when we were trying to make that budget, um, on the county cut funding, we cut a lot of the professional development out at that time. And, um, the fiscal, when we were going into 20, 2021. And we used Title II funding, um, but we've caught up on the Title II funding. So that's why you're going to see a lot of this professional development in each of the schools. Is we had pulled that from the budget, um, because we didn't need it at the time. But now it's a need as we get new standards and, and new mandates coming down to kind of add that back in. Along with, you know, there's peer observations in multiple of these situations. And that's where new teachers could sit in with a veteran teacher and watch how they teach math or English or whatever. The, this, so that also has a, we have to cover that class down, right? So we would need to have either the board sub that could go in and cover that class while she's listening or he's listening to the, and watching the other class. Or we would have to hire, um, a substitute to come in for the day. So I just want to explain that because you'll see this over and over again in each one of them.
Okay, moving to Aquinton. You'll see two of the requests for Aquinton are the same, lunch monitor and second board substitute. And so I've already, uh, explained that need. We currently have an individual that is providing some reading intervention as a reading tutor. That individual is funded through those federal dollars, those ESTR dollars. Those dollars expire, um, at the end of the school year. And so we'd like to keep that position if possible. And so that's why you see, uh, that line item there. And then moving up, uh, to the top of that page, an instrumental music teacher, similar to the Spanish teacher for Cool Spring. One of the things that we'd like to do and we, we, we received some of this feedback in the budget survey, and that is to strengthen the band programs at middle and high school, uh, marching band and instrumental music at the schools. And I believe that one way to do that is to, is to put instruments in kids' hands at an earlier age. And if we could include a teacher who can begin to, um, incorporate instrumental music, at least beginning in the resource rotation in third, fourth, and fifth grade, that's a great time to orient kids to music so that we can have a larger band program when kids, uh, make their way to middle and high school. And a, a rule of thumb from my perspective as a person that has done instructional programming and have worked at a high school, one of your, one of your goals in a high school is to have a marching band or a band program that has like 15% of the high school kids involved in it. Um, that's pretty reasonable. And I know that, um, that right now at our high school, we're, we're, we're well below 10%. And we'd like to be able to grow that program, but it's hard to grow when a student's first exposure to an instrument is in eighth or ninth grade. Because there's lots of other things that kids want to try to do when, when they get to that age. But, um, we think instrumental music and it's a, just a great way to keep kids engaged all the way around. Like Mrs. Longest said, the bottom of that page, you'll see some additional money for instructional supplies, for STEM supplies, um, for their PDIS initiatives. And then of course, PD and PLC training. Uh, we want to make sure that we support teachers and, uh, some of their professional needs as well. So I'll pause at Aquinton before we move to, um, Hamilton Homes. And then we'll talk a little bit about literacy here. Okay, why literacy? And I certainly don't want to take Dr. Bassett or Mrs. Davis's thunder, but it's a big deal right now. It has been for a long time, but it's really gotten a lot of attention with the passage of the Virginia Literacy Act. Uh, there are some expectations that schools in Virginia are expected to fulfill. Um, there are statutory requirements, and so I have that as the first bullet. Second bullet there, foundational literacy and numeracy are now considered civil rights imperatives, civil rights imperatives rather, uh, that, that the fact that some children struggle to read and don't have the resources available to them to help them read, um, becomes a real limiting factor in their, um, in their, in their educational prospects and even in their, um, lifetime earning prospects. And so we do have a, a moral imperative to help all students learn to read, um, you know, by the time they hit third grade so that they can read to learn independently after that. And then I love the quotation, um, literacy and justice for all. I think that's pretty clever. Um, we do know that even all the way through middle school, we have children that struggle to read and some children that we know that don't like to read. Um, but our focus on literacy can, um, hopefully help all children love to read and love to learn. And I think that we have a, a moral obligation to address literacy. So that's why you see, uh, some of those, um, you know, some of those requests that are specific to literacy in the lower grades. So let me pause there again and see if there are any questions, then we'll move to Hamilton Homes. Saving them to the end, that's okay. Move to the middle schools. Um, in an important way, the Virginia Literacy Act, we would like to In an important way, the Virginia Literacy Act, we would like to incorporate a middle school reading specialist to support student intervention, but also to support core language arts instruction. We received some funding this year. And I know you've received some information about that, some all-in funding. The school division, you know, received seven hundred and some thousand dollars that we have three year, that is supposed to last us three years and to help us with literacy, chronic absenteeism, and some intervention services. We believe we have funding now to support a reading specialist for FY twenty-five. But that's why you see the request for FY twenty-six is that we'll need to be able to recover that position in the subsequent year, assuming that the General Assembly, you know, is not going to provide any additional funding for literacy.
Can I add to that?
Please.
So currently we have two reading specialists at Cool Spring and two at Aquinton. And so this, we currently have none at the middle school. So this would be to kind of continue that process. So it's not adding a new one, it's just we don't have one currently at the middle school.
Thank you, that is, that's helpful clarification. And just so that our community knows, reading specialists are required by the Virginia Literacy Act. And there's a ratio of about one to five hundred and fifty students. And so like Mrs. Longus said, we don't have any designated reading specialist at the middle school. And we know that as kids move up through the lower grades, they will need that support when they get to grade six and grade seven. We have a position in there to support the administrative team at the middle school. Dean of Students, our middle school administrators, principal and assistant principal, and school counselors are spending an increasing amount of time responding to student behavior. And, you know, where they really should be spending the majority of their time supporting kids academically, not just behaviorally, but also being able to be instructional leaders in classrooms. And so we believe that a dean of students position will allow the principal and assistant principal to focus on instruction, to support literacy instruction, to help provide meaningful feedback to teachers and to help improve the instructional program overall. It's very difficult for the administrators to do that when they're responding to student behaviors and they're working the lunchroom, you know, all the lunches each day. It sometimes requires all hands on deck every day. And we think that, you know, our data would tell us that a dean of students would be a welcome benefit to improve student learning. And we have a reading coach that you see in an out year on FY twenty-six. We believe that having someone who can focus on secondary language arts. So you may have seen the reading coach position for elementary, someone who can specialize in K-5. We believe that having the same support in six-twelve would be helpful as well. And at some point, you know, we may share with you the desire to have additional content support in science and social studies and some of the other content areas. You'll see CTE when we get to the high school here. But that's the reason why you see the reading coach position in FY twenty-six is we want to make sure that we support longitudinally high-quality language arts instruction in middle and high school. And then last on that page is the request for a special education teacher. This is someone who can support IEP services that are required by students' individualized education plan, but also an individual who can support students in core classroom instruction as a co-teacher or a collaborative teacher. And that's a need that we believe falls in the coming year. Thank you, Ms. Longus said, we've got fifth graders that'll move to sixth grade. And so we want to make sure that we can maintain the support that those students need. And we'll need an additional staff member to do that. Last few entries for Hamilton Homes sound very similar to what you heard for the elementary schools. Additional instructional supplies and then professional learning for teachers. And just some examples of things, professional learning opportunities that we'd like to support in the coming year. And those actually would likely be ongoing expenses. But if they're funded, you know, if we can get the additional funding and that's sustained funding, then that should carry us through for the out years. So I'll pause on Hamilton Homes and see if there are any questions.
I do. So with the dean of students, with the disciplinary aspect of it, would that take away from Ms. Waldron's responsibilities? Or it would still kind of fall under her and be shared?
You mean in terms of supervisory responsibility?
Correct.
Or I think a dean, a dean is going to be someone supervised by the principal. But that dean is probably going to work closely with the hearing officer for student discipline issues and suspensions. I envision that a dean of students would be, not that we have a focus on suspensions, I want to make sure that's clear. But, you know, investigating student behavior, especially at the middle school level, can take a considerable amount of time. You know, there can be one or two incidents that could swallow up an entire day of some investigative work that an administrator has to do. We believe that that responsibility could be assumed by the dean of students. And that person could have the authority even to administer in-school suspension. And where the principal and assistant principal then would be responsible if there were a recommendation for out-of-school suspension. So a dean of students could be a position that frees up a considerable amount of time for the administrators. But yes, we'd work closely with Mrs. Waldron.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we moved ahead, we got to go to the high school.
Yeah.
Mr. Kellison, he's ready to go. Very good. I'll move to King William High School. One of the first items you see is related to what I shared a moment ago. We'd like to, we have an individual at the high school that's been working to support CTE coordination. We envision that those responsibilities, we want them to grow, and we hope that they will expand. And we'd like to move that position from eleven month to twelve month. And so that's why you see that modest adjustment there in FY twenty-five. We're proposing a new science teacher for next year. We are considering a curriculum change as well in ninth grade that is probably going to reshuffle some class distribution. And so we believe that an additional science position at the high school is needed to help moderate those class sizes and the class availability that students need. They'd like to continue providing tutors for SOL remediation. And that task is currently being funded through those federal dollars that expire at the end of the year. And so we'd like to try to recapture that funding in the local budget so that we can continue to provide SOL tutors. And then last on this list is initiative at the high school has begun. It's called credit recovery. And where there are students who may be unsuccessful in one given year and need an opportunity to make up credits the next year. And so the school has already designated space and some personnel resources to do that through a paid planning period. But we believe that we can consolidate some of that and use paraprofessional to be the adult supervision in the room while students work independently on their online credit recovery courses. And so that's why you see that personnel position in FY twenty-five.
And just to let the board know, that's been an ongoing request for the last few years. It's just funding hasn't been available.
Okay, and then a similar request from a high school here. Some additional instructional supplies. The high school, all of the schools could probably benefit from much more money for instructional supplies. But we've tried to be relatively modest here. And then of course, you see the same request for professional development for staff. So that's what we have outlined for each of the four schools. And we can move in now to some of the programs. Okay, Office of Special Programs. This is a busy little spreadsheet, so we'll try to walk us through it. We are requesting an additional paraprofessional for special ed at Cool Spring. And this would be a full-time adult, but the paraprofessional would be from ESS. We are proposing a division-wide behavior specialist. And I think that you'll hear more about this even from the General Assembly as they work to provide funding to support student behavior in schools. But we put this in an out year of FY twenty-six. Realistically, we'd love to have that in FY twenty-four. But we also recognize, as I shared earlier, that we can't have every request in one year. It's just not reasonable. But we did want to get the behavior specialist on the board so that the community knew that we were trying to prioritize support for teachers and support for students. The third item on that list, you may have some questions about this, but we got feedback from our budget survey. And I know that you've heard feedback from folks that have spoken at school board meetings before. We currently have an alternative program for secondary students. You know, it's the IMPACT program. Some students are placed there because of discipline. Some students could be placed there because they might need a smaller and more restrictive environment than the comprehensive school. We currently don't have any alternative for elementary students and especially those that we are unable or that we have to continue to provide educational services. So an example is a student with an IEP that might be a chronic behavioral concern at one of the elementary schools. Or a student whose behavior requires suspension from school, but the child is so young that they can't be removed from school. And in some cases, the limit of the school division is forty-five days. And that's like in the most extreme circumstances. So as it stands right now, just to use an odd example, if we had a fourth grader bring a weapon to school, let's say a knife, and the child was telling kids he was going to do something with that knife, we are able to suspend that student from school or even expel that student from school. But what we can't do is just abandon that child and not provide any educational services. Certainly if that child has an IEP. The only way to do that now is through home-based instruction, which is a lot of it's virtual and it's a limited number of hours per week. But we would like to propose the opportunity to be able to have an in-house current-day program that could support a small number of students with a teacher and a paraprofessional. Ideally, a teacher that might have some experience with behavior modification and a paraprofessional that could support. And we think that putting those children that are at risk for some of those egregious behaviors in a small setting in the school during the school day would be a way to help those children stay on track and not have to spend, you know, the majority of their time at home working virtually, which is difficult for an elementary child to be able to do. So we've got that as a placeholder amount for FY twenty-seven. We could talk a lot more about that. But let me pause and see if there's any questions, just with that item right there.
What would you think would be like the daily average of students that would be in that class?
So the question was, if you didn't hear, was like the number of kids that are in that room?
Yeah, what would be like the teacher-to-student ratio?
So the placeholder amount there is really about the personnel. In terms of the programming, that could go a number of different ways. You potentially could treat that program like an in-school suspension program for elementary. Or you could also treat it as a short-term placement program where they're there, where a certain number of kids would be there every day until they were ready to transition back into their regular classroom. So a couple of different ways to program that depending on the staff involved. But I don't think we're there just yet. But there are children who, you know, through our work with them, we recognize that that the general school environment might be too permissive for them. They need some more, a more restrictive environment with a smaller class size, you know, two adults in the room, maybe two or three adults in the room, just as a transitional period to help them transition back into the regular classroom. So, and maybe something else to sort of color this picture. You know, we do know that more and more, there are younger children that are engaging in more extreme behaviors. And lots of school divisions are seeing this phenomenon. You know, you hear about it all the time and have a situation like the, we're still on, it was the heat. The situation like the child in Newport News, you know, that brought the weapon to school, as terrible as that was, which was a horrific tragic situation, that child still needs to be educated, you know, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. And kids, and some kids like that may need an alternative setting to help them re-acclimate or readjust to get back into the regular classroom. So a program like this could take just about any shape. I wouldn't want to make that decision today. I'd want to rely on some of our team and our experts to help us determine what that might be. But I do believe that it's, that it might be something that, I believe that it is needed. I think it's been needed for a couple of years, but it's just one of those things that's, you know, that's that's hard to make that commitment to get it off the ground.
Thank you.
In this, this would be for K through five status, correct?
So conceptually, K five. And you, and if you're, you know, let's play that out. It might not be, it might not be appropriate to have a kindergarten and a fifth grader in the same room because they have different educational needs. And so you can see that we would need to think about what that might look like. And it could be a partial day program for some kids in lieu of suspension. You know, we'd have to, we'd have to provide transportation. But again, thinking that there are circumstances where children, young children behave in such a way where we know they have to be removed from the regular classroom, but we just don't have anywhere to put them. And so thinking, just thinking simply like that allows you to kind of get creative and develop a program that we know can benefit some of those young kids. And it's not a lot of kids. You know, it's really a small number. But all it takes is one highly disruptive young child that empties a classroom, you know, to really, to tie up everybody for the course of the day. And if we can, if we can avoid that and give a child the help that he or she needs to transition back into the regular room, even for a partial day, I think that's, those are services that are needed. Okay. We have for King William High School, a paraprofessional. And that would be to provide services and supports for students with disabilities. Similar position below for Hamilton Homes, a para for the autism and the intellectual disabilities program. Have a request for a project search teacher. And that's a specialized program for students with autism or intellectual disabilities. Proposing that in an out year for FY twenty-six. Similarly, a special ed teacher for Hamilton Homes. One of the things that we're anticipating is the current, one of the current classrooms at Hamilton Homes has an increasing number of students. And there might be a need to split that program into two. We might be able to work through FY twenty-five, but we anticipate some children coming in and children moving up. And we might need to make those class sizes a little bit smaller and more manageable. So that's why you see that special ed position at Hamilton Homes in FY twenty-six. And then a special ed teacher for Aquinton. And then another, the special ed teacher for King William High School. The Aquinton teacher is in FY twenty-five, the teacher for King William, we've got that pushed out to FY twenty-seven. Again, just trying to balance where some of these requests might go so that we can, you know, we can leave our budget process with something that's reasonable. And then similar to what you've heard before, instructional supplies, a modest amount. Professional development for special education, we've got that at a little bit more. And then we've got some funding requested for additional related services for speech, for OT, and for physical funding requested for additional related services for speech, for OT and for physical therapy. And, you know, we currently provide some of that on a contract basis, but we've got, we could probably use more money in that cell, but we'll leave it there for, for the moment. All right, so I'll pause on special programs and see if anybody has any questions. Or Mrs. Waldron, if there's anything that you'd like to add to, to my attempt to describe.
Dr. Wagner. Project Search. I'm unfamiliar.
Can you speak to Project Search? Do you want to come to the microphone? And thank you for letting me put you on the spot. And thank you for being here so that I can hand a question to you.
Project Search is working with, through VCU, and it's bringing in a teacher who is trained. And I know in other counties around the area, they work in the local hospital. But it can be through businesses where the students go and they learn the basics of, I'm just going to use a hospital because that's the one I'm most familiar with, where they have a classroom within the hospital that they are trained in all types of safety, hygiene. They have to be updated on their vaccinations. They have to learn the layout of the hospital. And then there's different categories or areas such as labor delivery, health services within the building. Trying to think of the, the ED department where they say they want to be in the rotations. So they take the students and they train them and they do three rotations during the school year. They follow the school calendar. The only glitch that I see that may be important here to note is that the parents are responsible for the transportation for these students for wherever they go. And many students then go through, they have to go through at least two rotations before they can be offered a position. It's a paying position and they go through the different criteria. And at the end of the school year, all of them may be placed and some of them aren't. But then they continue to work with job coaches until they find a placement suitable for them. It's a, it's a very, it's a great program for our students, it's a great program for our community and for the parents to see the students and how they start off and how they end the year because after each rotation, they also invite parents and family to come and they have to do a presentation to their family and friends about what they've learned so far. So it builds all kinds of communication skills, even with students who are non-verbal. They still can go through this program and they use augmented devices. It's, it's amazing. So that's my hope for our students in King William County is to get this set up and, and get them involved in it.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waldron. You said exactly what I would have said. Okay, we also have on our request, we are seeing a need for additional services for EL students. We currently have one full-time EL teacher and we have some part-time support as well. But it's very difficult for one adult to make it to four campuses where students might need support all on the same day. That's a very difficult thing to try to schedule. Our EL teacher, she has to navigate four different schedules, a caseload of each of the four schools, and it's a real challenging situation. And so we're proposing a part-time ESL teacher that, that might help share that, that responsibility and provide some more direct and targeted services to students. We've got that pushed out to FY twenty six. We could benefit from the services in FY twenty four. But again, just trying to be reasonable with some of the requests, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to balance that. But having one person serve four different schools is a real challenge. And, and, and for an EL teacher, you know, that caseload can change, just like with special education can change overnight. A family can move in and you can have three students that might be a level one and need more intensive services, and those three children could be at three different schools. And so to expect one professional to be able to be in four different places at one time is, is a real challenge. So and there may be, you know, that may be something that we come back in the future and even expand that to another full-time position. Again, that's depending on enrollment. Here's an example, though, of where state funding doesn't match up to the actual need. So school divisions are required by federal law to provide services to students that are English language learners. That's through Title III. It's a federal funding source and we receive about forty-five hundred dollars per year in Title III. And, and that's it. And so the rest, school divisions are expected to provide, you know, on their own. I will say that, that one of the more successful models of English language services is really about building expertise among classroom teachers and how children are scheduled and how classroom teachers approach instruction. And this is one of the initiatives in the Virginia Literacy Act is the way that literacy is being taught in the younger grades will also help English language learners as well. So, you know, a lot of these things tie together, but, but I did want to highlight the need for more EL support across our schools. So I'll stop there and see if there's any questions about that before we move into another broad topic. Okay. Moving along, I'll try to do this relatively quickly. You may have some questions about this and rightly so. We wanted to, to focus specifically on school safety. And we tied this to goal three in our strategic plan to support and strengthen the physical and mental health of all students and staff. And you can read the two objectives to which, to which this goal applies here. But I, I don't think I'm sharing anything that isn't well-understood that student safety today is a lot different than it used to be twenty years ago. And there's a tremendous focus on, on creating school environments that are welcoming and nurturing and supportive, but also safe. And some of that's related to the dean of students, you know, it requires, you know, this is definitely a people-focused initiative. But Mr. Kelson, we'll, we'll move ahead and we'll talk a little bit about a model for school safety that we'd like to suggest to the school board. There's a cost associated with this and, and I hope you can understand that we're required to provide things like threat assessment training every year for all of our school administrators and school threat assessment teams and ongoing safety training. And we have some modest costs associated with that under professional development. But we're also proposing a school security officer, at least to begin with, for both the middle school and the high school. Now, I'll share a little bit about what that position might entail. So currently, we are very fortunate in King William to have an SRO at each school. I don't know the number of school divisions or elementary schools in Virginia that have an SRO in every elementary, but it's, it's not universal. And so we're fortunate to have an SRO at all four of our schools, which is terrific. And our SROs provide a great support and, you know, they're good for kids, they get to know kids and they build relationships. And we know that that leads to, to student safety as well. But there are limitations to what an SRO can do where a school security officer, and actually on the Department of Criminal Justice Services website, you would see, they talk about SROs and SSOs in similar terms and in terms of support that they can provide. But an SSO, being locally funded and being an employee of the school division, is able to do things and to be places and to provide certain levels of support that SROs cannot. And so for instance, you know, if, if, if there were, and if, if there were a disruptive student, let's say that needed to be escorted from a classroom in middle school, and a school resource officer is not able to do that. But, but, so right now, that requires one of either the principal or the assistant principal to stop what they're doing or leave a classroom observation and to go to a classroom and respond to a student. If that school had a dean of students and/or an SSO, that individual could respond to those incidents instead of the administrator. That person can do some investigative work if there are allegations of harassment or, you know, anything like that. The SSO is the person that's available all day throughout the day to supervise children, check restrooms, be in the lunchroom, check the parking lot, make sure doors are closed and locked. And just be a presence, you know, in the school to support students and to respond when needed. And those are all actions that the SRO really cannot do. And, and there's, there's a legal boundary that the SRO can't cross. But if the school board hires and employs SSOs, those SSOs will do, can do anything that we as the administrators ask them to do. And that's a real benefit when it comes to student supervision. They're available for after-school events. They can work a flex schedule. You know, like if you had a, if, if you had a, a middle school activity or a high school basketball game, you could ask your SSO to work a flex schedule and, you know, and be available for some security at that event. So a great benefit. We're going to suggest one for King William High School and one for Hamilton Homes Middle School. We are also going to pursue or try to pursue a school security grant opportunity that may help to fund those positions for up to, up to three years. But those funds are going to be limited and again, that's grant, it's application-based. We may or may not be funded all or in part, but we have an opportunity to apply for that grant and we're going to do that. But in the event that we applied and didn't receive the grant, you see those placeholder amounts in there. And, and a hundred and fifty thousand that you see in FY twenty five is for two positions. These are not certificated positions. It could be a retired sheriff's deputy or a retired police officer or just someone that has an interest in being a school security officer and knows how to build relationships with kids. So that's why you see those two positions there. Those two positions are also related to the third item, which we potentially could fund through our capital fund. And that would be whether the board or the community had any interest in the schools providing weapons detection systems in some of our entrances. That's a whole nother conversation. But we've got some placeholder amounts in there. You know, the, the, the equipment, the device, they're about eighteen thousand dollars per device. And so you can see, you know, you can do the math and, and, and see how we might have several of those pieces of equipment installed per school. Again, that's a whole nother conversation. I'm going to pause and see if any of the board members just has an initial response to this notion of a school security officer and/or a weapons detection system of some sort. That's not an easy decision to make. We would need some community input for that. West Point Public Schools has just implemented weapons detection systems. I believe in their, in their secondary schools to start with, I think is where they're currently active. And King and Queen as well, but it requires people to be able to monitor those systems on a consistent basis. And that is an area where an SSO can help as well. But let me, let me pause there and before we get to the middle school athletics expansion and see if anybody has any questions or comments about school security in general.
So just for clarification, we will still have SROs in conjunction with SSOs?
Thank you. Yes, yes, the, the SROs, we, we, we want to maintain that relationship. And we would expect that SROs and SSOs would work closely together. But just keep in mind that an SRO can only respond to a situation in a school that might involve a crime or a violation of code, where an SSO can respond to anything that the administrators need in the school. So that's the difference is the flexibility of an SSO. And their flexibility of schedule.
And the SROs are under grants through the sheriff's office?
So anybody have any general question about school security? We, one of the things that we are, that we're able to do and we would make it a priority is if our school board wanted a presentation or our community, that our community wanted a presentation on a weapons detection system, you know, we, I, I, I think we could contact one or two or three vendors and those folks could come in and give a little conversation, maybe share a video and talk a little bit about what that process would look like. I think, you know, I talked to a few of our administrators. They certainly support the idea just because of the added, the added feeling of safety that we're, that there's more that we can do. You know, I, I, I don't want any of us as leaders or administrators or teachers to say what we're doing is fine because you don't have to look very far to find situations where folks are caught off guard and surprised. But that being said, we certainly wouldn't want to make a several hundred thousand dollar commitment if we couldn't implement it with fidelity and with consistency and without too much of an interruption to our, our staff and our instructional program. So we want to make sure that we could do it right. We're not prepared to make that decision today, but we, we, we did want you to see that we've got some placeholder amounts in there. If it were a priority, that we can pursue that a little bit further and talk about what some potential next steps might be, even if we started small, like at one school and then, and then worked our way down. So let me pause.
How, how will we gauge community interest in this?
That's a good question. We, one of the events that we have coming up on January thirty first is that, is that school safety and wellness community conversation. We've put out some information on social media and on our website that allows families to share information with us and to, you know, be able to ask questions that they'd like us to, to try to answer in that event. But we can survey our community. We can hold additional school-based or division-based information sessions. We can do, we can do whatever we can to try to, you know, social media, whatever we can do to try to get as much community input as possible, at least on the notion of what, of what that initiative might look like and whether or not parents would like to see the school board say yes to anything that we can do within reason to try to keep students and staff safe. So I think feedback is critical and I appreciate it.
So does the SSO officer have to use the, you know, if you're talking about a metal detection type system, would they be the only ones allowed to use that? I mean, as far as running it when people are entering through it?
So good question. We would probably have to train members of our staff to do that as well, folks that ideally, folks that would want to be able to do that and might have some availability in their schedule. A lot of this is going to, you know, depend on schedules as well. So we would train more than just an SSO. We would train administrators, but when you put one of these systems in place, it's, it's like a, you know, it's, it's something that you walk through. It's, it's sort of like a metal detector, but, but it, but what it does detect is the shape of objects that are either in a backpack or a coat or something like that. And then you have to have the ability and the capability to address what the machine detects. And, and that cannot involve the SRO initially. It can only involve school staff because, because of the standard, right? You know, school staff need reasonable suspicion and an SRO needs
probable cause.
Probable cause. Thank you. I couldn't, the words escaped me. And so the detection system doesn't give an SRO probable cause. So, but it does give the school staff reasonable suspicion. So they have the ability then to go through a backpack or a coat or, or something like, and you need that setup every day, all day to be able to do that. So that would be a role and could be a role for an SSO to play, but it's probably going to be something that involves more adults in the school as well.
Thank you.
And then you, you know, depending on your campus, you've got an entrance where adults come in and then you've got an entrance where kids come in on the bus. And so you might need multiple devices. And so that adds the cost and adds to the responsibility of the, of the people to, to maintain it. Now, more than happy to request additional SSOs, you know, if you had two people Um, you know, if you had two people per building, that would certainly be a step in the right direction. But again, that just adds to the, adds to the budget request. Fundamental question though is what's the price of student safety? And I don't know the answer to that question, that's definitely a community question.
And we have asked our peers related to that question, um, of how they implemented and different things like that. And, um, most of them have changed to their direction. Instead of every door being open for students to come in, if they're coming through one, two channels to limit, um, the access to the building so that everyone gets scanned and it's done appropriately. Um, I talked with, um, West Point person and, um, both that and, um, with King Queen person along with Essex, on how they went about the implementation process as we were trying to get this stuff together to see like what it would really entail.
So lots to think about. And if you, and again, when we get to the discussion portion, um, if, if these are things that you want us to pursue further, you know, if you want us to do X but not Y, well then we'll, you know, we'll, we'll go that route. But these are just some considerations that are on everybody's minds. So I appreciate the questions about that. Okay, Mr. Kellison, we can move ahead?
Uh, do you wanna do metal school?
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry, we can move back, thank you, Mr. Kellison. He, he, he's excited to present next, which is information technology. So thank you. We did hear in our budget feedback a desire for more extracurricular opportunities for middle school students. Um, we've heard this from, from a number of different sources, including coaches and teachers and parents. And so we've got some placeholder dollars in there. Again, these, 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 uh, numbers can be moved around. It's, you know, but I, but I would say that the summer of, of, uh, FY twenty five, which is this coming summer, is probably too soon to plan a comprehensive middle school sports program.
Mm-hmm.
Um, or an activity program, but we've got, we've got, um, a modest amount there uh, in each of the, of the out years to support the expansion of what that sports program would look like. We wanna make sure that, um, our community hears that this in no way is meant to substitute for Raiders football or to displace Parks and Rec. If anything, it would be in partnership with those agencies to find out where are the gaps in, or are there any gaps in, uh, sports that we can provide middle school kids? And if so, what can we as the school division do to fill those gaps? Whether it's activity or clubs or sports or intramural or something that the high school has that we can move down to sort of sub JV, JV level, you know? I think the sky's the limit, but we do know that doing, that doing so is gonna have a cost associated with it. And these are placeholder amounts that, um, we were just thinking might cover equipment and coaching supplements and transportation and maybe that's just one or two sports at a time. But, um, we, we did want our community to know that we're thinking about ways to enhance opportunities for middle school kids. So two repeat Raiders football stays and Parks and Rec is too. Okay, okay, thank you. Information technology relates to strategic goal five. And objective five point two is specifically maximize the efficiency and effectiveness of divisions operations. So Mr. Kellison, if you'll move ahead and, and please don't think that I have any expertise in these items and if you, you're welcome to come to the, to the microphone, you speak to any of these, but I'll do my very best in two minutes. Um, we are proposing a full-time or a part-time technology support technician for FY twenty six. So nothing, uh, for FY twenty five, but we do know that, um, as we begin to expand our technology resources, the support for those resources is critical. And especially because we're considering, um, retrofitting at least the high school, if possible, with new display devices in every classroom. Um, and that's gonna require some ongoing effort and maintenance. And so we've got a, a position there as a placeholder position. Network switches and supplies, uh, many of these things are ongoing and routine with respect to technology, things that need to be replaced. Um, sort of a new website that we're going to promote beginning after spring break. Um, power pack add-ons, those are, some of this is functionality related to Power School. Uh, Sentinel One protection is a new, um, sort of a firewall device, I guess, is, uh, antivirus protection, is that what it is? Yeah, and, uh, you know, we wanna make sure that our network is as safe and secure as it can possibly be against ransomware. And so we've got, uh, modest costs associated with some of those technology investments. And then, um, a common line item that you've seen is professional development for, uh, some of the instructional technology staff. So I'll pause and see, Ben, how did I do?
Good.
Okay, alright. Alright, let's move on to operations and maintenance, also goal five, to pursue effective, efficient and equitable use of division resources, operations and processes to support our strategic goals. So let's move on, thanks. Uh, some requests here, all of these are in FY twenty five. We have a wonderful, uh, facilities and maintenance staff here in the school division, but it's a small number of people, I will say that. And we are proposing, um, a position of a night custodial supervisor. Some, you know, Mr. Stone does a great job of doing the supervision that he can during the day and half the night, it seems like, but, uh, he's only one person and, uh, and certainly can't work twenty-four hours a day. And so.
And three AM fire calls.
So we are.
Excuse me, there, there's more, you forget the, the, actually it's three sixty-five days. So I've seen him here on Saturdays and Sundays, all hours of the night.
New Year's Day.
Every day. Christmas Day, um, Thanksgiving Day, I've seen him here every day.
And that's because if the buildings aren't walked during grace and things like that, we can come back to even more damage. We're asked constantly.
Yeah, yes, and he checks them out, he's, he's good about that.
And, and so, so I, I think you can see the justification for a full-time position that could work on, in the evening hours, also perform some custodial duties, but could also, someone would have some supervisory skills and can travel to the four campuses and make sure that what needs to be done is getting done, so.
So this is one person supervisor and maintenance?
So I think the thought behind this attorney, you can tell me otherwise, but, um, they possibly if something needed to be maintained or maintenance-wise, they would help. It's kind of a split situation, but it would kinda be whatever Tony needs before he leaves to the day, this person could kinda take care of. I will say, I don't know that we've had a full day this year that we haven't had at least one custodian out. So it's the cover-down approach for most of our, um, for most of this school year. And so this night custodian, as much as we would love for it to have a maintenance component to it, it's more than likely gonna be a night supervisor or cleaning a section because someone has called out or someone is out on leave.
And, and this person would be, could be at, potentially at any of the four schools.
Yes, ma'am. And as long as said it well, and Mr. Stone would agree, um, you know, when you're a couple custodians down and they get a day and you don't know who or when or for how long, that makes it difficult to plan projects. And, you know, having a person that would be full-time, you know, rather than part-time, um, you know, we think that might, you know, increase some consistency and be able to provide some needed support. Addition of a part-time custodian for the division, I, I think that's, probably goes without explanation considering that we have lots of absenteeism already. Uh, professional development for wastewater training, HVAC training, I, I think, um, the, that's just a modest amount of money there as well that you can see, but certainly justifiable. And then operationally, I think some expected increases in electricity for schools and athletics. And then, uh, an increase in custodial supplies and wastewater supplies that's related to the wastewater item above. So, so modest amounts there that you see under operations. And then we'll move to transportation, also strategic goal five about, uh, supporting the division's strategic plan and as efficiently and as effectively as possible. And so we have requested a special education bus driver for a special education bus that we're waiting to be delivered. And then we also will need a bus aid as well. So two additional positions in transportation, uh, and again, still waiting for, uh, some school buses.
And we currently have, um, a bus one order that should be here during, by the end of this fiscal year, I do believe. But what we're finding is our special ed, we have two special ed buses currently on the road. They are our longest routes, some of them as long as an hour and a half.
An hour forty-five minutes.
Hour forty-five minutes. And so there is definitely been a need for years and I kept asking Tony to wait and wait and wait, but it's now or never, at this point, um, we can't fit any additional kids on our current sped buses. The lo, the routes are, are way too long, so this is the time that we really need to make this happen.
Do you wanna speak to H five?
Sure.
Okay.
So, um, human resources and finance under goal two is to enhance the quality, diversity and job satisfaction of our workplace, increase and sustain employee retention rates and engage all employees in relevant job embedded and differential professional learning. So on the next slide, um, there's three requests coming out of human resources and finance. So out of finance, um, we have an estimate right now of, um, healthcare costs of about a ten percent increase. So that's three hundred and twenty-five. We will have that number, I'm, I'm told, late February. Much change from the previous year where we weren't finding out till July. Um, so we should have that number going into a final, um, approval. Um, but right now I'm, I'm being told that it's about a ten, possibly a ten percent increase there. And then, um, human resources, um, the human resources department has really seen an uptick in a parent-to-teacher type role where, um, we're still assisting teachers in tuition re-assistance and, um, professional development to get them up to the, to where we need them to be, um, district-wide. So this would add twenty-five thousand dollars for tuition assistance programs along with any other professional development needs that come through the central office type. Um, and then human resources, as you're well aware, we're in a teacher shortage, I would say a crisis. Um, but teacher shortage is the word being used. Um, so the, the five thousand dollars would be for recruitment supplies and travel for job fairs. So I think, um, Tina could probably elaborate drastically on this, but she'll go to a job fair at a large university and maybe only get a chance to talk to two or three people. Um, so she's having to attend more job fairs. Um, she's really thought outside the box, maybe a little stalkish, but she's definitely been thinking outside the box of going to the coffee shop and hey, are you about to graduate? Things like that. So I give her much credit for, um, her efforts in trying to recruit great talent to the district. But it, at, at any point, it has a cost associated with it. So, um, she's very frugal with her dollars, but this would just be additional funds that she could use for supplies and travel expenses and job fairs. Next slide.
Just a, just a quick pause, Mr. Kellison, thanks. Um, we don't have this item in the budget request, but, but school board members and I, I know our community are probably hearing more and more about things like, they're called grow your own programs. And there are some, you know, grant opportunities, but one of the, you know, one of the challenges that school divisions have is waiting for, uh, certain individuals to either make their way through a program or, and then, and then if they do, you know, where they might, where that individual might, might be, might choose to work. Um, there is an increased emphasis now in public schools and in Virginia in particular in encouraging school divisions to create opportunities where you can, uh, sort of encourage a high school senior to pursue a career in education or in speech-language pathology or school psychology or a school counselor, you know, all the PT, OT, all the positions that are hard to find. Encourage an individual to pursue that career pathway, those, 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 that schooling isn't cheap. But then, if that individual returned to your school division to be able to provide some incentive or some tuition reimbursement or something like that so that you can encourage somebody, instead of going to medical school, let's say that they, that you, you'd like that person, you'd wanna encourage them to become a school counselor and hey, if you do, or a teacher, and hey, if you do that, we'll guarantee you employment for at least three years or five years if you'll sign a, a contract like that. And then we'll forgive a certain portion of your tuition that you paid or supported in some way. Um, if our school board was ever interested in going down that path, we could probably make, you know, put some information together and make a presentation. But the, the notion of these grow your own programs, even for special education, are critical because, um, you know, we have a way to get folks excited about the work that we do, but we don't really have a way to help them pay for it. And, um, if, if we could, if we could devote resources to that, they would obviously be additional resources of, in, of whatever number or scope. You know, that might be a step in the right direction for us to, uh, to encourage some seniors to pursue a certain, and it, and, and maybe it's somebody that's already graduated, you know, there's one of the, I'll, I'll say this real quickly, there's a program in Virginia now that, um, will reimburse a teacher uh, that meets certain criteria if they graduated, let's say. So this could be a college graduate, if they graduated from King William High School and meet cer, certain eligibility criteria, that teacher might be eligible for a, a supplemental reimbursement from VDOE through a grant program. But they have to come back to the school where they graduated. You see, so the time to start that conversation is when kids are in school. And, and getting them to think about the career opportunities that we have and that the funding support that we can try to provide. So I just wanted to plant that seed and, and that may be a discussion for another time.
So compensation, recruitment and benefits. Um, each year I provide this schedule that kinda shows where we are currently compared to our peers. As you can see, um, anything that's green, we currently are, um, funding over that. Anything that's in yellow, we're within a thousand dollars of. And then anything in, um, in red is that we are at least a thousand dollars over. So, oh, a below, sorry, I apologize. Um, so as you can see, you know, West Point is in our same county and, um, their pay scale is hard for us to compete with and we know that and we've been trying for years. Um, Caroline, we're good at the beginning, not so great at the end. New Kent, good at the beginning and the end, but not in the middle. Hanover, we're good at the top and then at the bottom, but not in the middle. Essex, we're good at the top and bottom and the King Queen, we're currently above. So, um, when I took this information, Dr. Wagner and I sat down and talked about it, the state budget coming from, um, the governor, they get a one percent bonus. So a one percent bonus does not, um, equate to any VRS or any other items. It's a one-time payment to them, um, in which, um, they would get for the year. And then, and the next fiscal year, there's a two percent salary increase. So that's what the governor's proposed. Um, we are hearing gremlins from the House and Senate that, um, there may be additional funding coming out of that. Um, I'm looking forward to it and hopeful. Um, but what I have for you today, and some of this is based on our peers and some of this is based on, um, hearing some of what the county is asking for. Uh, if you could move to the next slide, please. We would like to ask for, um, for consideration for an average of a three percent increase for, um, teachers and staff. Um, the three percent would also go for ESS employees. But, um, the real work that I've really, um, have been spending probably the last week working on is some type of scale adjustment. Um, we have, when I got here in two thousand and nineteen, I received a scale that had been in place for, um, nine years before me and it had really bad compression issues. And every year we've given just a raise across the board because we needed to have that. But I really would like for us to consider doing some scale adjustments. The two scales that I think at this point that I think need the most work, one teacher scale and the other scale is the bus driver scale. So, um, this scale adjustment would give, um, some of those in, those employees in the middle, larger raises. Um, and maybe some of those in the outliers in a two percent raise versus a three percent raise to try to help with the scale adjustment. Um, I will tell you from hearing Tina's stories, when she goes, you know, she goes to recruit and then each year we'll lose five or six in that middle area. They'll go to our competitors, um, which I call the schools around us. They'll go to our competitors, um, which I call the schools around us are competitors. But, you know, they're leaving for a few thousand dollars difference. So we worked very hard to have a good benefit package, to have good insurance, um, package. But, um, if we were to have the funding to be able to work on the scale adjustments, I think that it would be, um, a, a good point there. Um, and so just to kind of say what a one percent is, so a one percent across, um, the budget is about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if the board was to say, we just want two percent, so we would take two hundred and fifty thousand off of that kind of thing. Um, the other thing that is in that average of three percent, we have, um, multiple classes, um, that have some that are, um, either, if minimum wage was to come through in that minimum wage sheet of thirteen point five, thirteen fifty an hour, we have, um, some custodial classes in some other classes that don't meet that requirement. So nutrition, custodian, um, some of those areas. And so I've accumulated that amount, which would be about a fourteen, four point three, three percent raise into that average of that three percent number. So the custodials would be about a four point three, three percent, and that's in that six hundred and ninety-six thousand. I'm gonna stop there and see if you have any questions for me. All right, we'll move on.
That's a, that's a lot to take in. I, I will say that the need for scale adjustment is pretty critical uh, because of some of the compression issues that we have. When you, when a school board makes a commitment to adjust scales and you create a scale that's equitable. So if, eh, if you're curious about what that means, you know, a, a teacher that begins as a first year, what we call like a step one. Some school divisions call it a step zero.
Yeah.
And then if you have someone that's recruited and they have four years of experience behind them, they would come in as a step five, if you can, if you can see how, how that goes. And there's typically an increase in compensation for every step or for every year of service. Where we're compressed is that some of the differences between steps are two or three times more between years six and seven than between years seven. It's, it's, so it's like totally arbitrary that just depending on where you are, you know, that, that Ms. Longest and I could have been colleagues in another division. We both come to work for King William, and because of our differences and years of experience behind us, we come to King William and now we're way far apart. Where we were super close together in the other place, we're closer together. And so creating, creating a uniform separation between each step is equitable and it's fair. And then it also allows the school board to say, in some other year, when we do give a salary increase, we'd like to give, let's say, a one percent increase plus a step increase. And then all the finance department has to do is shift that salary scale up one box. And everybody gets the same fair, equitable salary increase plus the one percent. But we can't do that now because the differential between certain steps on the scale is, is not uniform. And we really need to decompress that scale to be fair, uh, to all employees. So I really, that's hard work for the finance director and her team to do, to, you know, to do these calculations and to decompress a scale. Uh, there, but just so that you know, there's like a one-time cost associated with that. And, um, you know, we believe that we can do that incrementally across all of our scales and even build more scales where, um, where we currently don't have them. So I really appreciate Mrs. Longest's effort to, um, to, to put that in place so that you can see it and hopefully understand it.
That took three days of my life.
Well, we appreciate it.
So, um, the next slide is, I'm showing you our fiscal year twenty-five versus our fiscal year twenty-four revenues. So keep in mind, um, Dr. Wagner mentioned at the beginning, the fiscal year twenty-five is coming from that tool that I provided you at the beginning. But keep in mind that we are also being told that that tool is an estimate. And so from here, also the local revenue portion, um, is the same from one year to another. The only difference is our debt service does go down slightly. And so you'll see the local revenue portion and the debt portion together equal from fiscal year twenty-five to twenty-four. So if you can see in the fiscal year twenty-four, our state tax was, um, ten percent of our budget. Um, we believe that that ten percent was overestimated in fiscal year twenty-four, and we were given notice to that after we had started the fiscal year. So we're watching that closely. The advantage that we have this year is we have a lot of interest income, that we could offset some of that, so we're watching that very closely. Um, but you can see the projections of that come down a little bit into twenty-nine, into twenty-five, up to just nine percent of our budget. Our state revenues, as you can see, we went from forty-three percent to forty-five percent. Um, that is one, um, the ABM is also in- increased, um, but also, um, different variables that go into that. Federal, on revenue, we're, we're still sitting at four percent of, um, our total revenue coming from that. Um, we have some, some ones that have to be described on non-revenue of twenty-twenty-four. So I'm, um, after this budget presentation, my next thing is to work through the Ursa Citi funding to see what funding we have left, if we can carry any to the beginning of fiscal year twenty-five to offset some of the expenses that we're asking for. So I'm gonna be working on that and we'll have that for you in the February meeting. Our local revenue, like I said, is, is constant across. Um, once we finish this, um, you all approve a preliminary budget, we will present to the county on March sixth with any additional funding we may need. Um, and then we will, um, wait to hear from them if eh, there's any additional funding once they look at revenue numbers. Um, and then, um, we will come back to you and make additional cuts at that time if needed. Um, and then other revenue, as you'll see, there's a large increase in other revenue, and that is the majority of our partnership with the treasurer. Um, I, I have worked closely with the treasurer on our interest. Um, Abby Carlton, who's our current treasurer, um, negotiated amazing interest rates, um, with our, for our bank account. Um, and also we received all of the funding that was, um, sitting in the county that was related to our, um, capital reserve fund. So we received that in June of this year. So we're making about thirty thousand dollars a month in interest currently. As you are aware, when interest rate, when the interest rates for mortgages went up, the interest rates for bank accounts also went up. Um, so as mortgage rates start to decrease, I will watch that number closely and see if I'm overestimating that. Um, because the last thing I want to do is say, we're gonna have three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for interest. It doesn't, isn't gonna be there. So we're gonna watch that closely. And then as you can see, our debt service, um, where, where it was six percent of our bud- our revenue, um, is now five percent, um, as we're starting to pay off some of the, um, older debt. Any questions on this?
I want to mention that these will come maybe at the next meeting.
Yeah. Um, and so this is, most of this information we're, we're sharing tonight is really just, um, Fund Two-O-Five, which is our general, um, operating fund. So, um, at our next meeting, um, I will try to have for you, one, I will definitely have for you our capital plan, um, which will walk through all of our capital needs. The other things that I, I will, um, work to get to you would be, um, our impact and NP rates. We are fiscal agents of them, and so when we come as a whole, we will have their budgets also. And then also nutrition, nutrition's budget. Um, I will sit down with her and try to have that for you at the February thirteenth meeting, um, so that you can have all of the budgets kind of in line. So to kind of summarize the proposed twenty-five needs, um, and I'm not gonna walk into detail, but that's pulling from all of those tabs over. Our total need for twenty-five is sitting right at three million dollars. Now, keep in mind, these are the requests that came from the directors and the principals, and this is what we wanted to bring to you tonight for, you know, you to consider and for you to also give us feedback on. I will say that there is additional state revenue coming in at one point two, keep in mind that's an estimate. But also, if you were to be before with the weapons detection systems, that seventy-two thousand dollars could also come out of capital projects, and you'll see that in the capital projects, um, that we bring in February. So our current need at this point would be an additional one point seven. Um, but this is, you know, this is what we're bringing to you for you to provide any type of feedback you have for us. Uh, the next things we have, or can you be a closer?
I'm just trying to push the thing myself.
Um, our next budget meeting, so as you're aware, these are our next budget meetings, they are in line with the budget calendar that Amber provided and that you all agreed at the last meeting. And then to kind of wrap it up, do you have that?
Yeah. Mr. Kellison, if you wouldn't mind just going back one slide, just so we can sort of declare this publicly, um, is that we are asking, so, so, so you're, you're gonna be considering these, this information tonight, and it will ultimately become, when we get to February thirteenth, a superintendent's proposed budget. And then from there, the school board makes some final adjustments, and we with staff, we make some final adjustments. A little bit of time passes, it looks like about two weeks or so. And then there's a school board's proposed budget. So the, so the, the budget goes from the sup- what the superintendent is proposing to you to what you are proposing to the board of supervisors, because it's the school board's budget. It starts out now as our little budget, this is what we're suggesting. And then you, you know, you do your magic and, you know, we, we work together. But ultimately, you're gonna create a school board proposed budget that you'll adopt, and that, that you'll approve, and it's that budget that we'll take to the board of supervisors for consideration. And we will come back, uh, together for a final adoption, probably until we get, you know, final general assembly action and, and what the board of supervisors may or may not request of us to do, or what we may need to do in response to, um, to the, to the supervisor's final budget or the county's final budget. So just wanted to give the public a sense of where we are in the process is that ultimately it does become the school board budget, and we're gonna ask that, uh, you vote on a proposed budget by the end of February. So that gives us a little bit of time, but it gives the public time to come out and share information at regular meetings and, uh, to contact board members. And if, if, uh, the feedback that you receive are, are, are things that you want us to consider, well, then we'll have that open communication and we'll make those adjustments and have additional conversations. So I wanted to share that. Thank you. So in summary, this is the moment we've all been waiting for. I appreciate everybody's patience. I, I, I look at these metal chairs and, and I, uh, applaud our friends for, for sticking with us. And thank you, board members too, for your, um, attention and your patience, uh, tonight as well. We've been at this for, you know, for a couple hours. So in summary, budget development is about improving the academic performance of every student and equipping each student with the skills and the capability to fulfill personal education and career aspirations. Enhancing the financial and professional support for all of our teachers, administrators, and staff, that's every employee. We want to remain highly attractive and competitive in a challenging employment market. We want to maintain a safe, secure, healthy, and supportive environment for all students and employees. We want to accomplish the common goals of the school board, board of supervisors, superintendent, staff, and community. And we want to ensure that King William County is among the most desired and recognized communities in Virginia for teaching, learning, achieving, working, and living. That's an easy task. And so with that, we will pause for just a moment and see if the school board members want to engage in any conversation.
I think it looks great, and I appreciate you guys putting this together for us and all your hard work. All right, well.
And just to assure the folks that are here in the audience, thank you for being here. And for the folks that might be listening from home, there'd be plenty of opportunity for, um, community members to comment on a budget proposal. We're gonna get this posted on our website, um, tomorrow. Yeah, depending on the internet, tomorrow, um, or eh, eh, just as soon as possible. We'll have this posted, uh, we'll probably have this as an item right on the homepage. And, um, and again, appreciate your attention and your questions. And we look forward to working together to come up with a final product for a school board's proposed budget. So, thank you. Thanks, Madam Chair. We'll turn it back over to you.
All right, so our next item on the agenda is citizen comments, and it does look like we have two people signed up to speak tonight. Um, so we are gonna go ahead and start with, is it Josie DeRose? DeRose, if you can just state your name, the district for which you reside, and whether or not you're speaking on behalf of a group or an individual. Okay.
Don't be afraid, it's okay. All you have to do is just like this, it's all good. Thanks for being here.
My name's Josie DeRose. I am an individual. I'm a tenth grade student at King William High School. I am in our jazz band, concert band, and marching band. Every year since Ms. Glasgow has been here, our band has gotten an increased, like, has gotten so much larger each year. But since we have the same budget each year, it means each person gets lower quality materials each year. And band can be really expensive having a super shiny piece of brass or metal. And some kids are clumsy, and some students need reeds, grease, oil. And sometimes the students don't have money to, to supply it. So Ms. Glasgow will take it out of her personal budget to help us. And a bigger budget would also go, go towards new music stands or the middle school. When you put your music on those stands, sometimes they just like fall over. And that's not very helpful if you're trying to play music. And every student who is in band and every student I talk to, like, I haven't met a student in band who doesn't enjoy it. And it's all a big part of their lives. I think everyone's also in multiple pans. Uh, for a lot of band kids, this is also our sport, we're in marching band. And we should be able to have opportunities to compete like every other sport, like football and track, they get to travel. Uh, we don't have the budget to travel or go anywhere. And band just makes so many people have a better day at school and of more positive interaction.
Thank you, Josie.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker that we have signed up is Carolyn Jones. And Ms. Hutchinson, do you want to do it? Um, can you please state your name, the district with which you reside, and if you are speaking on behalf of a group or an individual?
Sure thing. My name is Carolyn Jones. I live in the second district. I am speaking as an individual. Um, I also am a KW CPS employee. I'm in my third year here.
Okay, give up me one second while we get the timer. All right, go ahead.
Okay, so first of all, I co-sign that. If the band department is growing, then I think it makes sense that the budget should grow. I'm a little biased because I was in the band when I was in high school. I played trumpet, and I know that it really can make a big difference in students' lives. So, yes, um, I am also the full-time English learners teacher. Um, I think I was mentioned earlier. And I'm not superwoman, um, but I do run myself ragged. Um, I'm not American worker, I'm just Carolyn, okay? To kind of paraphrase the Barbie movie a little. I, I am trying to be enough. And it's usually, I, I mean legally, yes, I am enough. But in terms of actually providing the level of quality services that my students really, really need to reach their full potential, I, I'm falling short. Because I'm one person, I am blessed with some part-time help, but my department is receiving kind of less, fewer, fewer hours in total for serving our English learners than we were two years ago when my caseload of students receiving services was twenty-five percent smaller. So department grew, number of hours we were providing decreased, and that's kind of weird. But I also saw the numbers that y'all had up there. And I know that we have a lot of needs. I have needs in terms of bills to pay. I was up at the board of supervisors last night, politely speaking my mind as to what needs to change and what I need in order for my life here to be sus- as to what needs to change and what I need in order for my life here to be sustainable. Um, and I won't give y'all that full speech part because I'm exhausted, I don't want to give all of it again. Um, but I also saw what was being discussed. Thank you for, um, everyone's hard work on making some, some proposals regarding salary increases and, and adjustments to this steps, uh, because the salaries were really badly compressed. Um, I am on, I believe step five, and I was looking at future years and I was like, whoa, like, I don't know if there's a future for me here. So I think that we are on the right track with making that happen. And if I had to choose a priority, I would choose the salary increases, um, as a top priority. Not just because it benefits me, but because when teacher compensation is a major issue and that is driving teacher turnover, that also makes my job a lot more difficult. Um, I love a lot of the teachers we've gotten in the past two years. They are funny, hilarious, hardworking people, bring fresh ideas. But King William has its own way of doing EL services. That's just pretty different from a lot of ceramic counties. We have a unique kind of situation here with regards to the number of students that is school. Um, and that's why my job is kind of a hot mess. But I have to bring all those new teachers up to speed on how we do things in the limit of my job and what I need them to do. And having to rehash that every year with a big cohort of new teachers is, it's a lot. So, in summary, um, I will, I will go and advocate for what we need in terms of funding for these raises and all the other items in the budget. I, I think I like what I see here and I think we need to advocate to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Jones. All right, and then the last, um, or sorry, no, the next one is matters of the board. Does anybody have anything? No?
Um,
Training today.
Oh, yes.
That's what I was just gonna say, I'm sorry, I was making a last note. On these wonderful speakers we've had tonight, I do appreciate them coming up and sharing with us. Um, especially our high school student, we need to see more of them coming out and participating and, and sharing with us. Um, but yes, today, the board was in training. We arrived at 8:30 this morning.
7:30.
We arrived here at 7:30 this morning. We arrived in Richmond at 8:30 this morning for training. Um, so we had a long, productive, great day. Um, we hope to be able to, um, show some of the professional development that we do um, in our meetings and whatever. And I just want to thank, um, my fellow board members for spending the day with me in that training. We got to, um, talk a little bit to each other and, and learn a little bit more about each other. And, um, I'm, I'm just excited about what this year. And, and now just to go and absorb some of this budget information so that we can come back and hash it out and make it, you know, the best that we can will be absolutely wonderful.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else? No? No? All right. Um, so our next item, then, the one everybody has been waiting for, um, is adjourning the meeting. Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I hope, I, I, I've, um, requested that we adjourn this meeting. I second.
All right, all in favor, say hi.
Hi.
All opposed? Say no? And no? All right.